The 10th meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Borrego.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take them at 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. I will also provide one warning to anyone causing a disruption. Upon a second continued disruption, that individual will be asked to leave the chamber. And if there is several disruptions during the meeting, we will take a recess and possibly cancel this meeting. So please, be as respectful to one another as you possibly can. Again, the meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under Item 3, Proclamations and Presentations. The first proclamation is Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm real excited about this proclamation. This is for the National Model Railroad Association, and I do like trains. So I want to invite Alan Hovey, and he's got some guests with him, so everybody, please come on up. The way I found this, started, worked on this proclamation, I went to North Domingo Bacca Senior Center, and I think it was a Saturday, and so I was walking around there, and we had, all these kids were in there. And I went in this room, and there was this huge layout of model railroad trains. And all these railroaders were helping these kids build these model trains, and it was very, very cool. And I remember when I was young, we had model trains, and my dad did. And so it's a very cool deal. So that's what this proclamation is about. So let me read the proclamation, and then I want you to introduce everybody you have up there. And so here goes. Better put my glasses on, though. Okay. Whereas scale model railroading is a hands-on activity that provides our community's youth and adults with a multifaceted hobby to share with their families and their communities, and whereas the National Model Railroad Association, Inc., is dedicated to its mission of advancing the scale model railroading community through education, advocacy, standards, and social interaction. Whereas the National Model Railroad Association, Inc., is a worldwide organization with over 18,000 active members, associates, families, and clubs dedicated to the hobby of scale model railroading and facilitating face-to-face interaction between modelers, clubs, and others. And whereas the Real Grand Model Railroad Club is a member of the National Model Railroad Association, Inc., that offers demonstrations and clinics at local community centers and other local venues on scale model railroading. And whereas the Real Grand Model Railroad Club uses scale model railroading to help preserve the history and culture of the railroad in American Southwest. Whereas the scale model railroading teaches hobbyists of all ages basic woodworking, electrical, assembling skills. And whereas scale model railroading has introduced millions of children to the marvels of electricity and mechanics in a way that has inspired many to pursue careers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas the City of Albuquerque supports the Real Grand Model Railroad Club in providing hobbyists with a forum to share their love of railroads with other like-minded people and the community at large. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque hereby recognizes the Real Grand Model Railroad Club for the great work and community involvement. So I want to say thank you all very much for this. So, Alan, if you'd introduce everybody you have up there, and talk a little bit about what you do and what you do for the community.
Okay. First of all, members of the council, thank you for inviting us tonight. On behalf of our model railroad group, it's called the Real Grand Model Railroad Club, and we're three years old. We do not have a playbook. We're still evolving as a group. We have 26 boys. We're recruiting for girls, but we have a hard time doing that. We keep losing them to soccer, but anyway. We're made up of 26 boys, and their parents are always there, as you'll see some parents down the line to my left here tonight. We also have a team of about a dozen adult modelers that are there each time. And we also have helpers from North Domingo Bacca. Angel Montoya, Tom Gallagher, and Janie Macias are the backbone of that facility that help us set up and run our operation there on second Saturday of each month. I can't see all the faces to my left here, so I'm going to just have each people, each person, just say their name as they go.
I'm Dick Beagle.
Lynn Garrison.
Chris Correa.
Robert Correa.
Janie Macias.
And we've got other ones here in the room, but I don't know where all their, where they're all at. I know the Collins family is here, and I know the Winger family is here. Okay, they're in the back. Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, great. Thank you all very much, and thank you for what you do for our community, and come on up, and I'll present your proclamation.
Okay. Thank you.
The next proclamation will be read by Counselor Penya, and this is recognizing the Atrisco Heritage Boys Basketball Team, who are the 6A champions. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as you come up, if the team mom, the team managers, and the coaches here, where's the team mom?
Maybe the team auntie?
There she is. And the managers, if you're here, if you guys can all come up. You know, this is really exciting. Atrisco Heritage is a school, prior to me being elected, I used to belong to a community group, and we advocated because of the overcrowding at West Mesa and at Rail Grand, and we advocated for a new school, and we, the community members didn't settle for anything less but a state-of-the-art school. And I think the facility there is wonderful, and to know that in such a short period of time that you guys are already state champions, so congratulations. So with that, I'll go and start reading the proclamation. So, whereas on March 10th, 2018, the Atrisco Heritage Academy Jaguars varsity basketball team won the 2018 NMAA Class 6A Boys Basketball State Championship. And whereas through hard work and dedication and determination, the Atrisco Heritage Academy Jaguars remained in the lead through the first round, quarters, semifinals, and finals, and they earned their way to the state championship. And whereas the 14 Jaguar varsity basketball team members, Angel Ramirez, Enrique Bibian, Jason Weisenberg, Dominic Rivas, Josiah Ramos, DeMarcus Stefan, Stefan, Marquise Crawford, DJ Ornales, Elijah Galaxia, Diego Ortega, Zach Carminang, I can't even say that name, so, Jordan Arroyo, Malicha Crawford, and Carlos Salazar won the 2018 state championship neutral playoff against Cleveland Storm with the score of 53-49. And whereas Coach Adrian Ortega and Assistant Coach Daniel Leba helped lead the Jaguars to victory. And whereas Atrisco Heritage, the home of the Jaguars, students, faculty, parents, and all of the city council District 3 will proudly wear the colors Navy and Vegas Gold in honor of their state champs. Be it proclaimed that the city council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby congratulates the Atrisco Heritage Academy Jaguar varsity basketball team for their great achievement of earning their first team state title in the school's history. Congratulations. Do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Members of the city council, thank you for having us. We're very honored. Not only is it our first state title, but these young men brought the first state title in any sport. We've been around for 10 years, competing at the varsity level for eight. So these guys have established a great deal of accomplishment, but the thing I'm most proud of with these guys is their academic standards and their character. These kids truly represent our community with class. So thank you for having us. We're really honored tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, if you don't mind, I just, again, want to congratulate them. I wanted to ask the boys if they wanted to say a few words, but that's okay. But I did want to say that you guys are the first champions of the school, but I hear that your team is not too far behind. They just took third.
Our dancers.
Dancers, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Penya. I had a chance to watch and witness that game at the pit, and the team did an incredible job, and I really want to thank their coach for inspiring these young players to achieve a state championship. And they've not been, this school's not been in existence that long, so again, congratulations. We are now under Item 4, Economic Development Discussion. There is none this evening. We will move on to Item 5, Administrative Question and Answers. Are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Penya.
I have a question. I was just wondering, out of curiosity, just if the officer or officers were okay. We were downtown on, I think it was like First and Cole, and a, one of the police vehicles rolled over, and we had just gotten there when it happened, so I just hope that the police officer or officers are okay. Are you aware of it?
Counselor's, Council President's Edges, Counselor Penya. I don't have a current update on that, but we can certainly find out and let you know.
Are there any other questions for the administration? I have one question, and my question is in regards to the next cadet class with the Albuquerque Police Department. Has that already started?
Council President's Edges, the next cadet class has not started. We're in the process of sort of the rolling admission process.
And how many do we anticipate being in that class?
We are hoping if everything pans out, as it's currently on track to do, that we will have 50 people in that class.
Thank you. That's good news. Okay, let's move on to the journal. Council Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the April 2nd Journal.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the April 2nd Journal. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction?
Mr. President.
Counselor Davis.
If I may just inquire, Item B is R-1828. It relates to economic development assistance and support of the Topgolf project. I know this was something that you had brought forward, and we were curious if this was something that needed to go to the Finance and Government Operations Committee because it had some finance component that would impact the budget, or if it was appropriate to come back, and just curious how we could accommodate that.
Basically, what I was looking at is the timeframe, I think, is a critical issue right now, because I'm hearing the Topgolf is looking at other places across the country. And I think we've got two weeks to hopefully work things out. I met with Dina Archuleta, the Economic Development Director for Burnley County, because they want to also help in subsidizing some of this project. But again, we can take it to finance. Time is really of the essence right now.
Mr. President.
Counselor. Sean?
If I may, Counselor Davis, this, what you've got in front of you now is more like an intent resolution than anything else. It will be, if the council approves it, it will be followed up by an ordinance that approves the local project agreement and the project itself. That will go to FGO.
Mr. President, if I could follow Mr. Zaman, I know Counselor Gibson has one as well, but Mr. Zaman, this has some finance components with some specific numbers and specific funding and components there. Maybe I should ask, does the council's finance staff and the economic development staff from the administration have time to evaluate those and their impacts on our budget in the next two weeks? Or do we need to go, is it, do they need that time to go through the finance committee to do that analysis so that it can form not just this project, but our overall budget can process?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, those numbers, except for the transportation tax number, the $500,000 in LITA funding has been a number that's been out there for quite some time. I'd certainly be glad to work with the economic development staff, but both of the trans-tax amount and the LITA amount are simply appropriations. If the council decides to not to move forward with the project, those dollars can be appropriated to some other purpose.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that's in my district, and I did meet with the Topgolf folks. In fact, we met once, had a pretty good meeting, and then a shorter one later on. And maybe it was on me, but I have heard like nothing about this until it appeared on the, recently, anyway, appeared on the letter of introduction. So I also understand that there was another method of possibly financing this, and we had passed that necessary legislation to make like a tid light, essentially. Of course, we didn't know what we were doing when we did it, but that's what we did.
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, if I may, yeah. The bill that's on introduction tonight has three components. Two of them are cash, one trans-tax, one LITA cash. The other is GRT increment financing, which is what you're referring to, and it is taking the incremental gross receipts tax, and it's not upfronting city cash, but it's taking the incremental gross receipts tax and using 50% of that to pay Topgolf off for an internal loan they will make themselves for the project. And that's the, that's the funding mechanism that you recall.
Okay, for how long?
Off the top, I don't know. I believe it's about 20 years.
But, I'm sorry?
Off the top, I couldn't say, but I believe it's approximately 20 years.
Okay. So, you know, I just really want to understand how we're going to finance this. I know it's a real popular thing, and got a lot of support, but I just want to, you know, make sure that I understand and agree with all the financing.
And we also had the opportunity to meet with Cynthia from Economic Development along with Mr. Ryle, and we discussed some of the alternatives. We had not talked since our meeting last week, but again, we can continue to meet on this issue, and hopefully we can come to a resolution, because I think we have an opportunity here in our community that will benefit the city. And companies that are looking at relocating in places like Albuquerque are also looking at entertainment venues. So, you know, I think we can get this hopefully worked out, because, you know, it's been a year they've been working with members of the council. We've got the new administration that is here, and hopefully we can come to a resolution to get this done. Counselor Bennett and Counselor Borrego.
Yes, I met with them, with Counselor Gibson, so, yeah, I mean, I think just as a matter of practice, the council in whose district such a project, potentially impactful project, is located, should be part of that discussion, so I'll be interested in seeing, I'll follow the lead of what I hear from Counselor Gibson. Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Counselor Gibson, I just wanted to mention that I also met with these individuals. They reached out to me, and we had a coffee to discuss this project. As a golfer, which I am, I wanted to mention that it really is an interesting project because it doesn't use any water, really. I mean, as, you know, as a per se, as a golf course. And I think that, you know, venues for the kids, and I agree, I think that, you know, we probably need to look at it a little bit more, but I think that it really does provide a different kind of venue for Albuquerque that probably has some real economic development impact. Thank you.
And I will ask the representatives of Topgolf to personally meet with you, Counselor Gibson, because this is in your district, and it will have the impact in your district, but I think it will have a very positive impact on this entire city. But go ahead, Counselor Gibson.
So, yeah, and I like the project. I, not necessarily a golfer myself, but I like the project. I like the model. That's not in question. The, but, you know, everything has a reasonable price, and I think that we have agreed to some things without really fully understanding them in the past, and I don't want that to happen with this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Mr. President, again, I'd like to go back and make a motion to make, take that item and refer it to the Finance and Government Operations Committee, if I may. I just think that if the development does not have a timeline that requires us to pass this in two weeks, I would like to see us, because I think there are some different presentations to different counselors on this project, and I'm supportive of the concept as well. I'd like to see a presentation go to the finance committee where they could evaluate with our staff. So I'd like to, and it may not pass, but I'd like to make a motion to refer R-1828 to the Finance and Government Operations Committee.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second by Counselor Gibson to remove that item and place it at the next finance meeting. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Excuse me. Is there a point of order? Is it, are we in the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, we're in a, all right.
This is the-
Communications and introductions, so we don't need, we don't need, we don't need to pull it off?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, I believe the motion was to amend the letter of introduction to refer that bill to FGO.
Okay, so that's the, I thought the motion was a little bit-
Okay, go ahead.
So that's the motion.
That is to amend the letter of introduction and replace that item on the FGO. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, one, three, four, five, six. All those opposed say no. That carries in a six to three vote. Okay, let's go ahead and move the letter of introduction. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under reports of committees. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, April 9th, 2018, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC 379 and 71, that receipt be noted. In the matter of EC 68, 69, 79, and 80, that they be approved and acted on at the meeting at which they were reported. In the matter of EC 70 and R-21, that they, that they be without recommendation. In the matter of O-50, that it be without recommendation as substituted. In the matter of R-234, that it be withdrawn by sponsor. In the matter of R-16 and 19, that they do pass. In the matter of R-17 and 22, that they do pass as substituted. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? See none. Let's go and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? See none. Council Vice President Harris.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are going to move the agenda around, and we are going to go to final actions, Item A. This is Counselor Penya and Davis. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item A is R-187. This is strengthening Albuquerque's status as an immigrant-friendly city, promoting public safety, safeguarding the civil rights and safety and dignity of all residents, and creating an environmental conducive to, an environment conducive to all victims of violent crime-seeking assistance. So we've been working on this for a while. I would, you know, urge the council's support. This is, we've actually, you know, I've been getting some calls, and people are asking, why are we doing this? This is actually already in place in the City of Albuquerque, was approved, we were approved in the year 2000 as an immigrant-friendly city. Last year, we reaffirmed that stance via memorial, and this year, I think because of some of the circumstances that have been out in the community, we just really want to, you know, provide clarity and the intent of the original resolution. So we've already, of this status, this would clarify some items, and I would urge the council 's support. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, we'll move on to other items with a public comment, and we'll be able to come back to close them for debate later. Thank you.
Thank you. We have close to 50 people speaking on this agenda item. We are going to change the rules, and we will allow a minute and a half, not the two minutes we've allowed in the past, to give everybody ample time to speak. I will call the first six names, and once your name has been called, you can come to the front and be prepared to speak. We have seating available for you. The first speaker is Leland Taylor, Phil Middleton, Julie Lofton, Sixto Abeta Jr., Don Schmidt, and Fabiola Baldwin. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, President and counselors. I'm here to oppose any further action on illegal immigrants or making their lives any better or separate from that of the citizens of the United States of America. There's lots of information available on what the preferential treatment for them is and how it adversely affects the community. It includes putting handcuffs on the police, who are already under severe stress and duress, underfinanced, and understaffed. By having illegal immigrants transferred, you immediately reduce the load on the city, and the city is already in financial trouble. I would like to see some serious positive management and responsible activity in this city to prevent this type of behavior. You have admitted that you need more money because of gross receipts tax increase, yet you don't take the steps necessary to reduce the costs and operations of the city, changing the union contracts, so that you have the money necessary to operate properly. This will only make it worse. Other cities who adopted this have suffered from it. The city, several cities in California have sued the state to prevent them from having immigrant-friendly status.
Also, we can only have one person at the podium, so if your name has been called, go and have a seat, and then you can come up to speak. Welcome.
My name's Phil Middleton. I have specific concern about Section 1, Paragraph 4. It appears to me that Paragraph Four is specifically written to obstruct federal agents in the due course of their duty. You're directing the Police Department and law enforcement for the City of Albuquerque to obstruct federal officials and the discharge of their duty, sort of in violation of the pledge that you take as you open this meeting, to obstruct the business of the republic for which we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Lofton? Sixto Abeta Junior?
Yes, I want to make this very sweet. Like it says, we find these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. Apparently, you guys don't understand this, okay? An illegal immigrant is illegal. Doesn't matter, okay? You do not give them a special priority in the legal system, okay? What you're gonna do is you're gonna have people that have been born and raised in this valley for three hundred years in conflict with them. You're gonna start wars between the Mexicans and the Latino Hispanics, the Indian-Spaniard community. And if you think this is fun, you guys don't live out there on the streets. We do. I know you, I know you, I know all of you, okay? I've been in this building a thousand times, but you people better understand, you don't need to do this. New Mexico never had a problem until you guys started doing this stuff. We had a very safe and nice-going community. Why do you want to be like California? If you want to be like California, move to California. This is New Mexico. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Don Schmitzit, followed by Fabiola Baldwin. Go ahead, proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Fabiola Baldwin, and I'm an organizer with El Centro de Derechos, and I'm a proud immigrant and a mother of three U.S. citizen childrens. It's an immigrants, El Centro is an immigrants' rights workers justice organization based in Albuquerque. We have over forty-five-hundred members, the majority of whom are low-wage workers. We are here in support to strengthening our status as an immigrant-friendly city. For those of you here in support, raise your fists to resist. We have over seventy-five immigrant and faith-based civil rights and liberty of legal service and domestic violence and sexual assault organizations who have endorsed this resolution. In order to, for Trump to carry out his terrifying vision of mass deportation, his administration is trying to strong-arm local government into enforcing federal deportation program. Ya basta. We are better than that in New Mexico. This resolution will build an Albuquerque legacy of integrity, immigrant into the economic, cultural, and civic fiber of the city. I believe that my childrens can grow up in a city that stands for our communities. In the past year, we have seen an uptick of ICE activity in Albuquerque, targeting our families at home, at work, and in our courts. Family unity is one of the, our core New Mexican value. Our vision is to make Albuquerque a welcome city. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for you.
Again, leave it with staff. And again, if the objects are more than eight and a half inches long, we cannot present those, so please, no more, and you can't hold them up, no more posters, okay? Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, Bruce Wyrick, Roxy Wyrick, Nancy LaSalle, Maite Lopez, and Carol Harmon. Once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Bruce Wyrick? Roxy Wyrick? Nancy LaSalle, welcome.
Oh, thank you. I took just a couple minutes and went to the dictionary and looked up the word sanctuary. Sanctuary, a sacred place, such as a church, a temple, or a synagogue. Does that sound like Albuquerque? I don't think so. I also looked up another definition of sanctuary, and it says immunity from arrest or punishment. Is that what we're after? I also looked up the word illegal, prohibited by law, by law. When did our nation stop being a nation of laws? When openly disobeying law, to me, you are breaking the law. And when we break our own laws, we soon turn into a third-world country, and I don't think I want any part of Albuquerque being even associated with a third-world country. I think your resolution is seriously flawed, and I really hope that you take another look before you agree to this.
Thank you. Maite Lopez, followed by Carol Harmon. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. My name is Maite Lopez. I'm a public ally who is employed at Encuentro, which is a local nonprofit organization. We are specializing in adult education for Latino immigrants, and I am a first-generation American. I have seen my mom struggle. I have watched her thrive. My mom has given me the greatest life that I could ask for. She has worked hard for everything that she has and everything she has given us, and she has instilled in me honesty, integrity, and empathy. She is my hero, and I admire her strength. To hear people talk about my people with such disrespect, we are people. We are your friends. We are your coworkers. We are your family, and we are here to make a better life for ourselves. My story is like many others, and my struggle is not my own. I stand here in solidarity with my community to urge you to vote in favor of Resolution R-18-seven. Our resources should be used to tackle the real problems in our community: addiction, mental health, education, et cetera, not to target individuals based on their country of origin. Immigrants are our mothers. They are our neighbors. They are our friends. And most importantly, immigrants are people. Todos somos Nuevo Mexico. We are all New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Carol Harmon?
Yeah, I don't know where to start. You know, this bill's supposed to be a legal document. You clumped the words immigrant together. There are legal immigrants. There are illegal immigrants. It needs to be separated, and then there are U.S. citizens. Now, all laws are made against human behavior, and illegal immigration is a behavior. It is not a race. It's not a color. It doesn't depend on you being a good citizen or a good person. The law has to be the same. We have two sets of law, one for legal immigrants that have to get a background check, a history of physical criminal thing, and then illegals that don't have to do any of that. And then they come in and demand rights, that we have no borders, no deportations. That's not fair. And then, from your little wall, I read all the illegals in New Mexico are nice people, but I got the statistics, because you use statistics from pro-illegal immigration. I got statistics from the Department of Homeland Security. Texas, in six years, they had two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand illegal immigrants booked, one-thousand-two-hundred murders, sixty-nine-thousand assaults, sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred burglaries, seven-hundred kidnappings, sixty-two-hundred sexual assaults, sixty-nine-thousand drug offenses. We have weapon violations, on and on and on. Sixty-six percent of the crimes in our neighbor Texas were committed by illegals.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker is Yolanda Gomez, Bernadette Blacker, Gwen Poe, Edward Glenn, Marco Nunez, and Manuel Sines. Again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Yolanda Gomez would be first, followed by Bernadette Blacker, followed by Gwen Poe, and then Edward Glenn. Okay, I'll call those names one more time. Yolanda Gomez, Bernadette Blacker, Gwen Poe, Edward Glenn, Marco Nunez, and Manuel Sines. Go ahead, I'll go and proceed and state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Bernadette Blacker. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but here I am. I think it's a shame that this has turned into Mexican, New Mexican situation, and that the immigrants are all referred to as Mexicans, and they have classified themselves as pertaining just to them. We have a lot of immigrants from a lot of different cities, a lot of different countries. Immigrants are of different ethnicities and nationalities, and this has turned into just a Mexican situation, and it's a shame. I think all laws are for everyone. I think this issue divides us all, not only them between Hispanics, New Mexicans, but it labels us, and I think America needs to stop doing that. We are all Americans, and we're all entitled to the same advantages, and we're all here to obey the same laws. And it's a shame that we keep doing more laws that we don't need anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernadette. Gwen Poe, welcome.
Hello, President, and my name is Gwen Poe. I am here on behalf of defending the police and a number of opportunities, because right now, we have a, we have an officer shortage. We have trouble getting policemen to run for, to be policemen. We have a whole bunch of trouble of getting people to help keep our laws where they're supposed to be, so that we have officers that are retiring, leaving, going other places, and yet we have a city that has a tremendous amount of need for following the laws as they exist. And if you are a bad person, whether you're black, white, Indian, illegal, or not illegal, you should be following the law and being taken care of. And so, yet, you're going to pass a situation where if you're not legal, you get free ride in the system. That doesn't work, and it doesn't work for the police. And so, I would encourage you to consider the opportunities for increasing the safety in our city by providing the opportunity for our policemen to be better officers, to be looking after us as a community. We are Americans. We are Americans, and I have no trouble with those things, but police.
Your time has expired. Edward Glenn, followed by Marcos Nunez, followed by Manuel Sines. Welcome.
President Sanchez, counselors, thank you for having me. I would like to point out, this is not an issue of racism. This is an issue of laws. And each and every one of you took an oath when you took your office, and you swore to uphold the laws and the Constitution of this country. This is not a matter of being cool. This is a matter of doing what's right. And Counselor Davis, Counselor Penya, I would like to remind both of you that anybody that is in this country illegally and who is working is violating federal law and committing a felony. It's not a civil infraction. It is a felony. And today of all days, we know that our taxes are due. And anybody that is in this country that is working under the table, they are committing tax fraud. That's a felony. Anybody that is filing false documents and filing taxes under a stolen social security number, that's a felony. And every single one of you counselors that thinks that you can pass any kind of resolution that encourages illegal behavior, just be aware that you, in fact, are aiding and abetting felons. This is not an issue of civil infraction. This is our country. This does not belong to other people. This belongs to us. We are immigrants. I'm an immigrant. You're an immigrant. Everybody here is an immigrant that is here legally. But somebody that came here illegally is not afforded any rights under the Constitution. Think about that.
Again, please hold your applause. Marco Nunez, followed by Manuel Sines, followed by Don Schrader, followed by Courtney Albu Mohammed.
Good evening, President Sanchez, members of the council. First of all, I think that any appeal to the rule of law and/or law just glosses over the complexity of any society. It was legal, it was illegal for people of different races to marry in this country. It was illegal for women to vote. There are plenty of contradictions between what we think today is law and what we think today is just with our own history. And each of you, I'm sure when you took an oath, understood that you have to swim in that complexity and figure out how do you support and strengthen the communities that you represent. So, I appeal to you on those grounds and ask you to support eighteen-seven. You know, I have the distinct honor of sharing an office space at Encuentro, where every day I overhear adult immigrant parents learning language, singing songs, reciting songs, doing dialogue with native English speakers. And they do that because they're building a foundation for their children, so that they can build on that foundation and make this country stronger. Every year, over ten billion dollars gets paid into social security by people who will never be able to claim one penny of that money, but they work anyway and they contribute anyway. There are plenty of studies, ad nauseam, that demonstrate the aggregate contribution, economic, cultural vibrancy far exceeds any cost that anybody would otherwise convince you of. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we are going to ask that you please hold your applause. Daniel, go and proceed.
Good afternoon, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Manuel Sams. I'm a proud New Mexican worker. I'm also a proud immigrant parent, student, and activist. I belong to El Centro de Derechos. It also belongs to a strong immigrant community that comes together to protect each other and our own families. I'm here today because I know that we, immigrant workers, work hard every single day for a better future for our children, and also because I know that our community is disproportionately affected by labor abuses. Countless workers have chosen to endure years of abuse from their employers because their employers had threatened then to call the police based on their immigration status. At El Centro, we organize workers to fight for their rights, but unless our community receives the direct support from our elected officials, abused employers will continue to be concreted on the backs of families. Our power has always come and will continue to come from our base, from our members, immigrants, families, and workers. Resolution eighteen-seven is essential in ensuring that our families are able to try. We must set the precedent for other cities across the nation that local governments can stand in defense of our communities and against racist rhetoric. Because of this, I ask you today to support Resolution eighteen-seven, which will bring benefit not only to our immigrants and refugee families, but also to all Albuquerque workers and the economy of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Schrader? Again, we are going to ask that you please hold your applause. If not, we will take a recess. Next speaker, Don Schrader.
I support R-18-seven. I strongly support full human rights for all immigrants. Many immigrants flee here from war, persecution, severe poverty caused largely by the United States. Since nineteen fifty, the U.S. government, under both Republican and Democratic presidents, has overthrown fifty governments, many of them democracies, and has bombed thirty countries. The U.S. government routinely, deliberately sides with the filthy rich to rob and oppress the poor in many nations. Many immigrants would prefer to stay in their native country if living conditions there greatly improved. The U.S. invaded Mexico in eighteen forty-eight, murdered many people. The U.S. stole from Mexico most of what is now the U.S. Southwest. No human being is illegal. All immigrants are our sisters and brothers. I speak tonight in memory of Jose, an immigrant from Mexico whom I was in love with years ago. I want this city to be a safe place for refugees and undocumented people.
Next speaker is Courtney Albu Mohammed. Next speaker is Courtney Albu Mohammed, followed by Justin Reamer, followed by Hilaria Martinez, followed by Felipe Rodriguez. Then there will be Hope Alvarado and Javier Solis, welcome.
Hi, my name is Courtney Albu Mohammed, and I'm seventeen years old, and I'll be graduating from Manzano High School next month. First, I want to thank all you for signing a letter of support for my dad, joining the mayor and over a hundred other elected official faith leaders, veterans, educators, asking for his immigration case to be reopened so he can leave the church where he's been in sanctuary and come home. As you know, my dad came here as a refugee twenty-six years ago. He served in the U.S. Army in Iraq and in California. He was given a deportation order fifteen years ago for missing an immigration order, or an immigration court date because he was on base. This still impacts our lives today. My dad has been unable to leave the church where he's been in sanctuary since last June. When my brother passed away in Oklahoma last month, we weren't sure if my dad would be able to see his body or say goodbye. We were able to have a service in the sanctuary church where he stays. Oh, sorry. He has not been able to go visit my brother's grave. The day we had my brother's burial, there was an ICE agent who had asked whose funeral it was, and I just, I find it very disrespectful to be burying my brother and for an ICE agent to ask my grandma whose funeral it is just looking for my dad. I just wanted to bury my brother in peace, and an ICE agent had asked whose funeral it was with no remorse or no respect for the dead, and I just wish this gets passed. Thank you.
Courtney, Counselor Davis has a comment.
I want to tell you how much I've appreciated getting to know your family just a little bit in the last few months, and the hearing of your brother's passing and the circumstances there is incredibly troubling, and I appreciate so much that you and your mom have done such a great job to advocate for your dad and to help us get to this place today with this resolution to be sure that our city won't continue to assist other folks to end up in that situation. And I want to say thank you for being here. I know it's very hard right now for your family.
Thank you.
Counselor Pnegel, Courtney, not in quite yet. Counselor Pnegel.
Ma'am, I want to thank you for coming to give your testimony. I think that you are a very brave young lady, and I hope that your family is at peace with your brother's death. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Reamer, Thamert, Hilaria Martinez. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you. President Sanchez, councilors, friends, I thank you for considering this contentious and yet important issue tonight. As the Executive Director of the New Mexico Faith Coalition for Immigrant Justice, this is a time when I have been deeply distraught to see so many families like Courtney's impacted for so many years. Her father, who has been here for twenty-six years, Emma, who is also in sanctuary in Albuquerque, who has been here for twenty-six years in the United States. These are not people who are a danger to our community. They have contributed so greatly. I want to share with you two brief snippets of stories for other people who we've worked with over this last year. One mom who has three children with severe disabilities had her husband deported this last year. Her husband had been wrongly accused of a crime that his cousin had committed, and the family did not want the cousin to then be put in jail. Her husband ended up being deported, and now she is faced in this situation of either looking at, does she stay with her children in a place where they can get the health care that they need, or does she go to Mexico where her children might not survive? Another father who's been working with law enforcement in an investigation of a crime who was deported last week, he has four U.S. citizen children. You've seen the strength of Courtney, who would rather focus on playing basketball, being able to graduate this next month, and looking at her future, but instead has had to constantly be appealing for support for her family. Please pass this resolution.
Thank you, Justin. Hilaria Martinez, followed by Felipe Rodriguez, followed by Hope Alvarado.
Mr. President, we will ask, want to ask for a little bit of time so I can translate for her.
That'll be fine.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Hilaria Martinez, and they are my four daughters, and the most important reason that I'm here is because I want my daughters to keep growing up in this beautiful city. Puedo estar, puedo testificar que mi familia es solo otro ejemplo de cuánto contribuye nuestras familias inmigrantes a la ciudad. Quiero continuar como voluntaria y quiero retribuir a las escuelas que han dado tanto a mis hijas. Quiero que mis hijas, como todos los niños de la ciudad, puedan tener una vida saludable, graduarse de la universidad, y ser mujeres independientes que contribuyan a la economía. Esto es la comunidad a que continúe organizándose, expresándose, y defendiendo la justicia de nuestras familias. También apoyamos la resolución dieciocho siete porque brindará protección a los trabajadores inmigrantes y dueños de negocios. Venimos de una familia trabajadora inmigrante. Mi esposo y yo tenemos planes de comenzar nuestro propio negocio. Mi esposo estaba alquilando un lugar donde había abierto su taller mecánico. He ha estado tomando clases de negocios para comenzar con mi pequeña empresa de catering y un día crecer ayudando a contribuir a la economía de nuestras ciudades. Esta resolución fortalecería la economía de Albuquerque al mejorar el apoyo a los trabajadores inmigrantes y a los empresarios inmigrantes. Les imploro hoy que apoyen la resolución dieciocho siete y defiendan los valores de la justicia y la unificación familiar que orgullosen a nuestra ciudad.
I can testify that my family is just another example of how much our immigrant families contribute to the city. I want to continue to volunteer, and I want to give back to the schools that have given my daughters so much. I want my daughters, like all children in the city, to be able to have a healthy life, graduate from college, and be independent women that contribute to the economy. I urge the community to continue to organize, to speak out, and to stand up for the justice that our families deserve. We also support Resolution eighteen-seven because it will provide protection to immigrant workers, workers and business owners. We came from an immigrant working family. My husband and I both had plans to start our own business. My husband was renting a local and had opening his mechanic shop. I have been taking business classes to get started my small catering business and one day grow it up, helping contribute to our city's economy. This resolution will make Albuquerque's economy stronger by improving the support towards immigrant workers and immigrant business owners. I implore you today to please support Resolution eighteen-seven and to stand for the values of justice and family unification that make our city proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hilaria. Please hold your applause. Felipe Rodriguez, Hope Alvarado, Javier Solis, Lori Wiyaki, and Linda Wilson, welcome.
Your members of the council, my name is Felipe. I'm an organizer with the New Mexico Dream Team. I'm also a student at the University of New Mexico, and I am undocumented and unafraid. I am here today to support this resolution because I came from a country, from a violent city where we couldn't trust our police department. It was a city that was under the cartel economy, and like someone said, because of U.S. intervention, people had to rely on alternate economies, and the police department was battered by the cartels. I have experienced firsthand what happens when community doesn't trust police. The situation gets way worse. So I really want to ask you to make Albuquerque a place where me and my community can feel safe. I remember the first interaction I had with an APD officer a few years after I immigrated. I was pulled over driving on course because I had my headlights off because I forgot. Simple human mistake. In other cities, I could have been deported because of that, and I would have never been able to see my parents again. Here in Albuquerque, this police agent had a protocol, and I got super nervous because I didn't know that. And I guess he noticed that I was really, really nervous, so he was like, hey, relax, I have a protocol. I don't care about your immigration status. I just need to know why you have your lights off. And I was like, it was an accident. And he gave me a warning, and he told me, never do it again. This is the way that our cities work. I refuse to be called an immigrant and to not feel safe in the city. That's my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope Alvarado, welcome, Hope.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and fellow councilmembers, yat e shee Hopa Verado y nin shet tworichitni nishle nakai dene abashischin twotsochni dashichem esclero Apache, Docomanche, dashinale ahut ad san nishle. My name is Hope Alvarado. I am with the Diné Nation, the Mesclero Apache and Comanche Nations, and I am here to support Resolution eighteen-seven because in honor of indigenous values of e and kinship, I stand in solidarity with undocumented youth and families. Let me remind you that our communities depend on the resources of indigenous people, and it was built off of the backs of those who were of African descent and the labor of our undocumented communities and families. If you know your facts, you would know that our undocumented communities only contribute to fostering public safety.
Excuse me one moment. If you would, please, with the cam, with the phone, you need to step back, please. Ready, ready. Thank you.
With public safety and building community. It's important that you pass these policies and that you do in an anti-racist and unbiased mindset. This means recognizing that policies are already, are already, and perpetuate and uphold white supremacy, racism, and settler colonialism. Undocumented communities make our communities safer, and I humbly ask that you support this resolution in stopping the enforcement of federal deportations and collaborations with ICE, and please support Resolution eighteen-seven. And with that, no deportations on stolen land. Ahiaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Javier Solis, Lori Wiyaki, welcome.
Hi, my name is Javier Solis. I am a senior at Savelli Academy, and I come from a mixed status family, and I want you all to support this and all. It's right now, it's hard for me to talk about it. Due to, I'm afraid actually just not having my parents with me. I'm the oldest of three, so with that means like if my parents would be deported or anything happens to them, I would have to take care of them instead of me going, having an education, and actually helping this nation with tax and basically having to work. It just, it just seems really unfair for me. And I'll have to quit, quit going to school, get a job, probably go into poverty, probably become homeless, because I don't have the support that I need within my family. And it just, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, it's just hard because I just don't like this injustice. I want everybody to be equal, and I don't know, it's just, I just hope you guys could support this.
Thank you, Javier. Lori Wiyaki, followed by Linda Wilson, followed by Robert Foer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and all the city councilors here this evening. My name is Lori Wiyaki. I'm Diné Coach Tenzuni Pueblo, and I'm here today as the Director for the Native American Voters Alliance. And I do want to thank both Councilors Pena and Counselor Davis for bringing this resolution of immigrant-friendly to the city's attention. I think it's important for Albuquerque to be friendly and to also be wise. I think this, so I stand in support of Resolution eighteen-seven. I think that it does promote safety. It does help with our resources, our police departments. I think by passing these sorts of resolutions, it helps to keep families together. And I want to say to all the little children that are here this evening, I want to say thank you for your courage and your strength and for your strong heart to help us move forward in a good and positive way. I think that keeping families together is a wise use of our resources, and it puts less stress on the system for, if people are happy, if they're together, and they're able to bring their economic forces together. And so in this way, I just want to say thank you to all the young people, all the young kids here. Really brave of you to be here. Ahiaha.
Thank you, Lori. Linda Wilson, Robert Foer, welcome.
Hi, my name is Linda Wilson. I'm a native New Mexican. I grew up in the North Valley. I've raised my two children here. And I have one question. Why, why is it that we legal citizens don't have a say in this? It doesn't seem right to me that we contribute, we pay the bills. We should have a say. And I think, I just don't believe that this is happening, that we don't get a vote on this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Linda. Robert Foer.
I'm Robert Foer. I'm a high school history teacher for APS. From time to time, the federal government has created or enforced laws that are so unjust that state and local governments had to pass their own laws negating some or all of the ill effects that these federal laws would have on society. The Fugitive Slave Act of eighteen-fifty is a perfect illustration of federal government overreach, states and state pushback. In brief, this law made it easier for southern states to reclaim slaves that had escaped to freedom to the north. I would hope that we all are in agreement in this room that the federal laws that helped maintain a despicable, dehumanizing system of oppression was wrong, and that the states were fully justified in challenging it. Again, we are faced with whether we comply with a federal push to remove those without documentation or protect the many families that are helping to build a better community in Albuquerque. The sanctimonious words from the current leadership in Washington are intended to mislead the public into believing that immigrants are a threatening force to be reckoned with. I wish I had the ability to personally apologize to all those people who had been harmed by these derogatory words of hatred. It is unacceptable and lacks factual data to support it. The checks and balances of power between federal, state, and local governments are designed to halt the abuses of any individual, any one individual to impose one's will on the people. The recognition of human rights that pushed states to react to the Fugitive Slave Act must now be applied to immigration laws.
Todd Hawthorne, welcome.
Mr. President, councilors, Todd Hawthorne. I'm actually a resident of Rio Rancho. I want to highlight just a couple of quick things. First, I want to compliment you on the fact that you're willing to take on such a huge, deep issue. You're taking on global concerns, and I appreciate that. I'm going to suggest that you actually think through this process a little bit and think about where the origin of the problem is. Everyone here tonight is talking about being compassionate. You've heard emotional appeals that are, that are deep-rooted sentiments, and every American here has those same kind of sentiments. The real question before you is how we solve these questions, how we solve these problems. I would suggest, Mr. Clausen lays out a very good case in The Five Thousand Year Leap for Americans to reach out and extend our principles to other countries. We need to do the work to solve those problems of mistrust of the police in Mexico, in Honduras, in Guatemala, in other parts of the globe. That is the actual work that we need to do. As I recall, the city budget in Albuquerque doesn't quite have a foreign policy element to it. That's the kind of approach that you're using. This is the wrong body to be having those discussions. I'd remind you that the federal dollars that are being spent on enforcement are federal dollars that should be effective. If this city decides to turn it away, I can tell you that it will, it will go away. There is the opportunity for enforcement to go elsewhere. The city of Rio Rancho is concerned about that.
Mustafa Amini, followed by Iris Kelts, followed by Adrian Cover, followed by Larry Sontag, followed by Duane Norris. Again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Mustafa Amini, and I'm a board member with the Islamic Center of New Mexico, representing an interreligious organization called Muslims and Jews United. Our organization aims to shatter the prevalent stereotypes and represent a collaborative and unifying vision of Jews and Muslims communities within New Mexico. We have had the great opportunity of having an article published in Albuquerque Journal on March 12th titled Help Keep Albuquerque Immigrant Friendly, Help Keep Albuquerque Immigrant Friendly, where we stated that we support equal access for all persons in Albuquerque to city property and services, and believe that all of Albuquerque benefits from being an immigrant-friendly city. Therefore, we support the passage of the council bill R eighteen-seven. We believe that City Council Resolution eighteen-seven seeks to reinforce Albuquerque's legacy as an immigrant-friendly city. This resolution limits atrocities, atrocious scenarios such as mothers and fathers being arrested and torn apart from their families in the same courtrooms that are supposed to uphold laws and rights as opposed to take them away. The resolution also helps inculcate the very constitutional principles that establish the rights of individuals across this entire country, the same principles that are being violated by the current establishment. This resolution will help our city say no to those who wish to disrupt the local immigrant fabric that serves as a foundation of Albuquerque's success and heritage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Iris Kelts.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Iris Kelts. I'm a retired educator, a member of Nahalat. I'm a retired educator, a member of Nahalat Shalom, and Muslims and Jews United. Formed in the wake of the November election, Muslims and Jews stand side by side as friends and allies. There is fear in both our communities, fear of Islamophobia and rising antisemitism. We're here to advocate for public policies that protect minority communities. Anxiety about deportation has been growing. Fear prevents immigrant victims from reporting a crime, domestic violence, or going to court. We support the City Council Resolution R. 18-7 to strengthen Albuquerque as an immigrant-friendly city. U.S. Immigration Customs Enforcement should not enter sensitive areas like schools, hospitals, and courts. We agree that Albuquerque residents should not have to disclose their immigration status except as required by law. Immigrants must have safe access to all city services. No one should be judged by the color of his skin, his ethnicity, religion, or legal status. With the exception of Native Americans, we're all a nation of immigrants and a diverse society. Thank you.
Thank you Iris. Adrian Cover, followed by Larry Sontag, followed by Dwayne Norris. Welcome.
Council President Sanchez and councilors, my name is Adrian Carver. I'm the Executive Director of Equality New Mexico. We represent over 14,000 members of the LGBTQ and ally community in the state. I wanted to start by apologizing to all of the undocumented community members that after everything this country has done to you, that you have to sit here and listen to racist rhetoric. The UCLA's Williams Institute estimates that there are nearly 1 million adult immigrants in the United States that self-identify as LGBTQ. Historically, the law was used to explicitly bar queer people from entering the country as immigration officials were allowed to simply refuse entry to people who they perceived to be LGBTQ. Today, rather than facilitating integration, the Trump administration's policies are forcing immigrant communities into the shadows. The federal mass deportation agenda creates a hostile and fearful environment for immigrants. In addition to the threat of deportation, LGBTQ immigrants face high rates of violence. LGBTQ unauthorized immigrants account for 17% of anti-LGBTQ hate-violent survivors. Furthermore, given the, actually, I'm sorry, given the increased and important role that immigrants and their families play in our economy, it is critical that the country works to expand outreach and services. That's why we ask for your support of our 18-7 as a piece of pro-economic development legislation. We know that immigrant and LGBTQ-owned businesses have created jobs, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Larry Sontag. Welcome Lori.
President Sanchez and city councilors, I represent the New Mexico Business Coalition, and we want to talk about this issue of immigration, which as you've seen, it can be divisive, it can be very emotional. The New Mexico Business Coalition agrees, and we work hard for supporting comprehensive immigration reform. We're on record telling Congress they need to fix DACA and do something about children who were brought here through no fault of their own that have been here for years. But as, I think it was Counselor Gibson mentioned earlier, you can be supportive of something, but then you have to realize there's a price to pay. We do not support a resolution because we don't think it's necessary to make Albuquerque a sanctuary city. Other than Native Americans, we are all immigrants or descendants of immigrants. The fact that we're American, the fact that we're New Mexicans, we are immigrant-friendly. New Mexico needs workers. We need to work out a situation for fixing the guest worker program. But the price to pay for passing a resolution that tells law enforcement to look the other way is not what this city and our state needs to help law enforcement fight the battle that they are to try to keep us safe. We support our immigrant community. I was able to give my card to several groups tonight, and we would love to talk about what we agree on. Thank you.
Thank you Lori. Dwayne Norris, Andrea Plaza, Joan Brown, Marlene Parati, and Rosemary Blanchard.
Thank you President Sanchez, and thank you, members of the council. I'm Dwayne Norris. I'm a teacher at Bandelier Elementary here in the city, and I'm also one of the Vice Presidents of Albuquerque Teachers Federation. Last May, we passed a resolution to stand with immigrant families and put on a May Day event to actually support them and let people know that when we look at students, we don't look at people who are illegal or illegal. We see students. We don't look at parents and wonder if they're criminals. We see families that are supporting those students. You know, I've never heard of it anywhere in the world, being a crime to be a refugee, and I believe that that is what we're dealing with, is a refugee situation here in the United States. And I really hope that you pass Resolution 18-7 because I believe that it's a citywide act of civil disobedience against an unjust law, like one of my brothers said a few minutes ago. I see no need for the city to spend resources on this kind of activity when ICE is already funded by the federal government. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrea Plaza, followed by Joan Brown, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Andrea Plaza, and I'm the Executive Director of Encuentro, a local adult education and career development organization that's been working for many years in collaboration with various organizations to support immigrant entrepreneurs. As part of our efforts, we distributed a sign-on letter throughout our business and economic development community, asking the city council to support this resolution, and we collected over 23 signatures from local business leaders and local business owners. Immigrant workers and immigrant owners play a vital role in the economic solvency of our city, and the attacks on our immigrant and refugee communities coming from Washington are not only immoral, they are not good economic policy. In New Mexico, we've encountered multiple cases of ICE targeting immigrant-owned businesses to conduct I-9 audits, also known as silent raids. These types of raids and the creation of any barriers that prevent hard-working individuals from contributing to our society are completely contrary to the efforts of widely-supported programs and initiatives like City Alive and the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. And contrary to Mr. Sontag's comments, they are essential to our public safety, and their collaboration with local law enforcement supports community policing efforts that keep our neighborhoods and business corridors safe. And for these reasons, we ask the city council for your support on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you Andrea. Joan Brown, followed by Marlene Parati, followed by Rosemary Blanchard, followed by Elizabeth Givara, and then Jane Givara. Can proceed Joan.
Is that, is that on? Oh, it is, okay, great. Good evening, thank you, president and councilors. My name is Sister Joan Brown. I'm a Franciscan sister, and I'm the Executive Director of New Mexico Interfaith Power and Light. And I, as a Franciscan, I believe, we believe, all people are sacred and all places are sacred. And I reiterate what Archbishop Wester stated to several of you who were part of a committee a few weeks ago when he was in support of this resolution, and stated that we need to follow the biblical call to welcome our neighbors. So I support this resolution. Also, as, working with New Mexico Interfaith Power and Light, we are very aware that one of the reasons that will grow in increasing severity is environmental degradation and climate change. So we will have more immigrants and more refugees because of that factor, and we need to start facing that as well. So I'm here tonight to present, and all of you have a copy, a letter, a faith letter from the New Mexico Faith Coalition for Immigrant Justice, signed by about 30 faith leaders. And we believe, as people of faith, we are called to follow a higher law of compassion and true justice. Deporting families that have been part of our communities for decades and have earned their place in society, or departing people who made mistakes in the past but have paid their dues, is not true justice. So we support this, and I invite you to read that letter again, and thank you for your work.
Thank you Sister Brown. Marlene Parati, followed by Rosemary Blanchard, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sanchez and members of the Albuquerque City Council. I am Marlene Parrot. I'm a Sister of Mercy, and I stand in solidarity with the Holy Family of the Bible, Jesus, Mary, and Joseph, who had to flee, and hopefully, we realized Egypt opened their arms to them. And I also stand in solidarity with all the families that have had to flee their home I am an immigration practitioner, and I have seen over and over and over again families that have come to the border, have presented themselves, have not broken the law, and our response is that we have criminalized them, and they have been detained for over a year. If they have not presented themselves at the border, and they are detained, they are eligible for a bond, and they may be released. One of the things...
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Givara, followed by Jane Givara, followed by Jeremy Ferris, Sarah Kelly, and Mimi Lopez.
I think you forgot one.
Go ahead and...
I'm Rosemary Blanchard, you...
Rosemary, go ahead and proceed. My apologies.
That's okay, that's okay, and my grandson is holding my duffel for me because Grammy doesn't walk all that well.
Take your time.
Yes, oh. All right, get it down to short here. President Sanchez and councilors, my name is Rosemary Blanchard. I'm the Chair of the Albuquerque Chapter of the United Nations Association USA, which is a local affiliate of the United Nations Association nationally. We Albuquerque chapter support Resolution 18-7. It is consistent with and it reflects the highest values of the United Nations as expressed in the UN Charter and the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and it continues the tradition of grassroots support in the United States for fundamental human rights, as expressed in Article 8 of the Albuquerque City Charter. It's particularly appropriate that this resolution be addressed at the level of city government. In 1992, the U.S. Senate ratified a treaty, the International Covenant of Civil and Political Rights, to implement part of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The Senate ratification language said that we're a federal republic, and that the implementation of this human rights treaty would largely take place at the local level. And they assured the world there wouldn't be any problem with that. And even before 1992, in 1971, the people of Albuquerque added Article 8 to the city charter, calling on the city council to preserve, protect, and promote human rights and human dignity. I find it particularly ironic that today, the same national government that in 1992 federalized the protection of civil and political rights now threatens to penalize local governments...
Pam, your time has expired, Rosemary?
Yes, I hear that.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So, I hope you will support this resolution.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Yes.
Elizabeth Givara, followed by Jane Givara, Jeremy Ferris, followed by Sarah Kelly. Welcome.
I'd like to request additional time to translate for my mother.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, President, President Sanchez and members of the Consejo. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Givara. Soy originaria del Salvador. Y en este momento insentirumbre para nuestras comunidades de inmigrantes. Recuerdo las dificultades que mi familia soportó durante la guerra salvadoreña. En esos momentos también nos discriminaban por el color de nuestra piel, nuestros acentos, nuestro origen étnico, y nuestro estado como inmigrantes. Igualmente estamos siendo discriminados en este país hoy. La resolución 18-7 haría posible que nuestras familias trabajen y vivan en paz, sin la ansiedad de que nuestros hijos sean separados de los brazos de sus padres. La resolución 18-7 nos permitirá continuar haciendo que este país sea grandioso a través de nuestro arde de trabajo. No venimos a este país a pedir beneficios gratuitos. Venimos a este país a trabajar duro para que nuestros hijos puedan recoger el fruto de nuestro trabajo. La administración federal intenta separar nuestras comunidades y hacernos sentir aislados al obligar a los gobiernos locales a cumplir con las leyes federales de inmigración basadas en los valores nacionalistas blancos. Sin embargo, nuestra comunidad seguirá trabajando en conjunto. Continuaremos estudiando, continuaremos organizando porque no seremos expulsados de nuestros hogares, de nuestras comunidades, y mucho menos de nuestro país. Le pido que apoye nuestra resolución para asegurar que Albuquerque respete su legado de resistencia.
Good afternoon, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Elizabeth Givara. I am originally from El Salvador. And in this time of uncertainty for our immigrant communities, I remember the hardship my family endured during the Salvadorian war. During those times, we were also discriminated based on our skin color, based on our accents, and based on our ethnic and immigrant backgrounds, similar how Trump is discriminating against us in this country. Resolution 18-7 will make it possible for our families to work and live peacefully. Without the anxiety that our children would be separated from their parents' arms, Resolution 18-7 will allow us to continue making this country great through our hard work. We come to this country to work hard so that our children can collect the fruits of our labor. The federal administrations attempting to break our communities apart and to make us feel isolated by attempting to force local governments to enforce with federal immigration laws based on white nationalist values. However, our community will keep working together, will continue studying, we will continue organizing because we will not be kicked out of our homes, of our communities, and from the country we call home. I ask you to support this resolution to assure that Albuquerque honors its legacy of immigrant integration. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jane Givara, has she spoken?
Yes.
Okay. Next is Jeremy Ferris, followed by Sarah Kelly, followed by Mimi Lopez, followed by Melissa Jamison. Oh, you Jane Givara?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. I didn't know if you, that, if you had already claimed that as your time, but go ahead.
Good afternoon, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Jane Givara. I am a daughter and a sister of undocumented immigrants. I am a member of El Centro de Igualdad y Derechos en Encuentro New Mexico. I am a U.S. citizen, but unfortunately, members of my family, my friends, and community are not. I can go out freely without thinking what today be the day I'm separated from my family. And I know that this is the situation of many in our communities who no longer want to leave their homes because of fear. Our families are afraid to be the next target of the hateful rhetoric coming from DC. Our families are afraid of being sent back to countries that are no longer theirs. My family left running away from the violence and persecution. The communities and homes they left behind no longer exist. Our communities help build disdain in this country. We're living in a time where racism has become normal. Families of color and different religious background are being targeted. These families are not targeted when they care for the elderly, when they clean your houses, and when they pay taxes. This country has been built on the backs of immigrants and slaves. Why can't we come together to build an even better nation, a nation with no racism but with equality? I urge you to support Resolution 18-7 so that we can come together and continue building our beloved city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Ferris, followed by Sarah Kelly, followed by Mimi Lopez, Melissa Jamison, and Edgar Salinas. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Jeremy Ferris. I practice law at Friedman Boyd Hollander. Before that, I was fortunate to work for judges on the United States Court of Appeals, the United States District Court, and the Supreme Court of New Mexico. I know that you have competent counsel that are advising you on this resolution. Tonight, I want to assure you, on behalf of El Cincero and the public, that this resolution does not violate federal law. The most relevant statute on point is a federal statute called 8 U.S.C. Section 1373. Now, what that statute does is it prohibits you from restricting Albuquerque city employees from sending ICE information about an individual's citizenship or immigration status. Let's be clear, this resolution does not do that. What this resolution restricts is the collection of citizenship and immigration status information. It doesn't restrict the sending of that information to ICE. And the Second Circuit Federal Court of Appeals has already made clear that Section 1373 does not require the collection of anything. Further, a committee amendment that would restrict the sharing of some information, such as national origin or religion, also would not violate federal law because those are not indicia of citizenship or of immigration status. So this resolution does not violate federal law. If AG Sessions or another member of the Trump Department of Justice targets this city for adverse consequences based on this resolution, many lawyers in New Mexico would be willing to meet him in federal court, and this city would prevail.
Thank you. Again, please hold your applause. Sarah Kelly, welcome.
Thank you, councilors, president. I don't prepare very well, it's irresponsible pardon, but I just wanted to mention, a number of people have mentioned that we're all immigrants. They apparently have selective memory, history, and laws are written by colonizers. We're all immigrants, and laws are changed that's for the convenience of leaders. And the reason people are coming here illegally is because of meddling that the United States has done in other continents. So, just... So, just, I plead with you to support R-18-7, and that I won't banter disorganizably too much longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Mimi Lopez, followed by Melissa Jamison, followed by Edgar Salinas, followed by Robin Gibson.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Mimi Lopez. I urge all of you to support R-18-7. You've heard many reasons why you should do so. The Albuquerque City Attorney has stated that this resolution does not violate federal law in any way. I want to call your attention to a ruling issued by a federal judge in Los Angeles last week. I'll read a few excerpts from a New York Times article published on April 13th. "The Justice Department Cannot Require That Local Police Departments Help Immigration Agents in Order to Receive Federal Funding," a federal judge has ruled. Manuel Real, United States District Judge in Los Angeles, issued a permanent national injunction against the federal funding rules. The ruling handed down Wednesday came in one of several lawsuits that state and city officials in California have filed against the federal government, arguing that it has overreached in trying to force local officers to help with immigration enforcement. In the ruling, Judge Real said that the funding rules violated the notion of separation of powers enshrined in the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I put this in as part of the record?
You may. Give it to our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Melissa Jamison. Edgar Salinas will follow. Welcome.
Good evening, President Sanchez, councilors. Thank you. My name is Melissa Jamison. I'm very proud to have been born and raised here in Albuquerque, New Mexico. I'm very proud to be a New Mexican. I'm very proud to be an American. I'm very proud of my strong, smart, brave, beautiful Latina daughter. And I'm very proud that the city of Albuquerque has since 2000 declared itself a city that is immigrant-friendly. Many people have touched on many issues that I might also reiterate, but I will focus instead on a couple of items. I would like to ask for your support of R-18-17 as a matter of public safety. In my work, I frequently work with victims and witnesses of violent crimes. Rapes, violent robberies, domestic violence, a whole range of horrors. And it is critical for all of them to feel safe going to the police, reporting, and cooperating with prosecution. This happens when police focus on fighting crime here locally and not on enforcing federal laws. When police do the work of federal ICE agents, entire communities learn to fear the police, discouraging reporting and cooperation with the prosecution. Then all of us are less safe because criminals go free. So, I urge you to support R-18-17. Thank you.
Thank you. Edgar Salinas, followed by Robin Gibson, followed by Carla Molinar, followed by Angelica Hall, followed by Marta Pereira. Welcome.
Good afternoon, President and members of the City Council. My name is Edgar Salinas. I am a proud immigrant, working father of three American kids, and a member of El Centro de Igualdad y Derechos. My wife and I decided to make this city our home over a decade ago, and have come to learn about and feel pride around its legacy of standing for the rights of immigrants and refugees communities. This is particularly important to us as we work hard every day for a better future for our childrens. We, workers, strengthen the social and cultural foundation of this city through our participation in our children's school, local churches, the arts, and that community in organizations such as El Centro. We are Albuquerque neighbors, coworkers, and the families that pray side by side with you on Sunday at church. We are New Mexicans, and we love Albuquerque, the city we call our home. I have heard firsthand from other immigrant workers afraid of coming forward with their effects, with their cases of labor abuse and wage death because they fear retaliation for their employees. This affects our local economy because employers do not pay taxes on the wages owed while workers and their family are harmed. As a father of small children with special needs, I urge you to pass this resolution so that my wife and I can live in peace knowing that we will be here to take care of our childrens. Remember, low-wage workers are also part of the economy back on this society. We deserve to have the same protections and equal rights as everyone else.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Robin Gibson. Welcome.
President Sanchez, members of the Council. My name is Robin Gibson. I'm a member of the AFT New Mexico retirees, and I speak in strong support of this resolution. As an elementary school teacher in Albuquerque, I've seen firsthand the chilling effect immigration raids, even just the threat of raids have on a classroom. How should I teach fractions to students who are afraid that when they go home at the end of the day their mother or father will be gone? How do I explain to the rest of the class why their friend is suddenly gone and won't be coming back? As our community faces unprecedented challenges with crime, the budget, the drought, just to name a few, the last thing we need is to foster instability, ill will, and mistrust. Instead, let's pull together to solve our problems cooperatively as a united, supportive, welcoming community.
Thank you. Next speaker, Carla Molinar, followed by Angelica Hall, followed by Marta. Welcome.
Mr. President, City Councilors, the current resolution is about making all of our communities trust our police officers so that when they experience crimes, they're able to contact police officers without being deported. On-time immigrant policies being enacted by the Department of Justice are demanding withholding money in order to separate families. We should not have to deport families in order to protect all of our families. That's what we're standing up against today. Today, I heard a lot about "we're all immigrants." And no, most of us are immigrants, including myself. But the difference is between legal and illegal. Every single day, we spend all of our energy and lives and taxes trying to prove how much we want to be part of this country. We're just not allowed to do so. People do not understand what we risk when we come here and why we come here in order to provide for our families for a better lives. We risk hunger, and we risk walking through the desert just for a chance at life and just to be called illegal and not be given a chance. That's all we want. To end, I would like to read this prayer in order to vote in favor of R-18-7 because it reflects to me the value of undocumented people giving their lives for their families and their country. "The journey towards you, Lord, is life. To set off is to die a little. To arrive is never to arrive until one is at rest with you. You, Lord, experienced migration. You brought it upon all men who knew what it is to live, who seek safe passage to the gates of heaven. You drove Abraham from his land-
Carla, I apologize. I know you're in the middle of a prayer, but your time has expired.
Thank you.
Angelica Hall. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Sanchez and members of the Council. My name is Angelica Hall. I am a criminal defense attorney here in Albuquerque, and I'm also Vice President of the New Mexico Criminal Defense Lawyers Association. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of NMCDLA in support of Resolution 18-7. NMCDLA has 550, more than 550 members that include criminal defense attorneys, investigators, paralegals, and also social workers. And we advocate for fair and effective criminal justice across the state. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a very important part of justice for all, and that is equal access to the courts. You may have recalled that there was a story out of El Paso where a victim who went to court to get a domestic violence protection order was detained by ICE because she was not a documented immigrant. Well, that, of course, caused great concern to the defense community, and we started to observe along with our other organizations here in New Mexico. And unfortunately, I'm here to say that despite Albuquerque being an immigrant-friendly city, our city resources are being used to deny equal access to the courts. We have reports of people being detained in and around courts in their pursuit of coming to court to challenge accusations against them or to seek restraining orders or to seek other forms of- thank you.
Thank you, Angelica, for your time. Marta Pereira, followed by Diane McCash, followed by Scott Campos, followed by Kristen Greer Love. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President Sanchez and members of the City Council. My name is Marta Pereira, and I am an immigrant that came from a third-world country very proud as well. I am a USA citizen, and I'm in support of my community. I'm also here today representing Enlace Comunitario. Enlace Comunitario is an nonprofit organization that provides services, domestic violence services to our immigrant communities, as well as seven other organizations that also provide services to sexual assault and domestic violence survivors. We, as a community, need to ensure that we need to ensure that we have laws and policies that are friendly and not deter immigrant victims from calling 911 and create an impossible choice for them. They must either stay with their abuser or risk deportation. The current environment makes it even more frightening for victims to come forward and seek help. At Enlace, I'm sure, as other organizations that provide services to victims, we see survivors that come after a severe incident the night before and are still petrified of calling police more than they are that perpetrate it. We need to ensure that the institutions that are here to protect us are doing so instead of being coerced by the federal government. Albuquerque has a history of being diverse and inclusive to everyone. It's our commitment to ensure that Albuquerque continues to strengthen our friendly immigrant policies and ensure that all families are safe, not just some. I also have a letter that was signed by other organizations that provide domestic violence and sexual assault services-
Marta, your time has expired. Thank you.
Can I leave this here?
You may.
Thank you.
Diane McCash, Scott Campos, followed by Kristen Greer Love. Welcome.
Good evening. Making public safety decisions for our community needs to be at the community level. This resolution lays out important policy that would protect our community from being manipulated by the federal government to do the federal government's work with our resources to our detriment. As you have already heard, the courts are on our side. As previously mentioned, US District Judge Manuel Real issued a permanent nationwide ban against the Justice Department policy that gave an edge to cooperating local police departments[1362.45] departments applying for community policing grant programs. As MLK said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Affirming our immigrant-friendly city status and clarifying policy is the responsible thing to do at this time. This policy will support our police as they do the hard work to increase the public trust and will reinforce the effectiveness of APD's efforts to strengthen community policing. The resolution strengthens our entire community's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Campos, Kristen Greer Love, Myrna Lascano, Linda Tilly, and Mike Shuttle. Kristen Greer Love, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kristen Greer Love and I am a staff attorney with the ACLU of New Mexico. I urge the city council to pass this resolution tonight to strengthen Albuquerque's status as an immigrant-friendly city and reject the Trump administration's vile efforts to bully our community into enforcing its anti-immigrant racist agenda. The Tenth Amendment protects Albuquerque from bullying by the federal government. The United States Supreme Court has repeatedly held that the federal government cannot commandeer local officials by forcing them to, among other things, enforce federal immigration law. For this reason, the immigrant-friendly resolution is squarely in line with the Tenth Amendment and with federal law. Across our country, cities, counties, and states have rejected Trump's unconstitutional efforts to coerce local governments into enforcing immigration law. The law is on our side, as we've heard several times this evening, and it's on the side of immigrant-friendly communities. And immigrant-friendly communities have won in the courts. Indeed, courts across the country have enjoined the Trump administration from making good on its efforts to withhold federal funding or otherwise punish cities and counties whose immigrant-friendly policies are unconstitutional. On the other hand, communities that have joined Trump's deportation force by honoring unlawful detainers in their jails and shifting precious resources, community policing resources, to enforce federal immigration law have been forced to pay out major settlements for violating the constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Myrna Lascano, Linda Tilly, Mike Shuttle, welcome.
I would like to ask permission to translate for my mother.
You may.
Thank you.
Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. Buenas tardes, President Sanchez and members of the council. Mi nombre es Myrna Lascano. Ella es mi hija Mariel Leon. Soy madre de cuatro hijos. Soy miembro del Centro Igualdad y Derecho y estudiante en Encuentro Nuevo México. Mi esposo y yo venimos al Albuquerque hace 13 años por la situación económica difícil en que la vivíamos. En un futuro cercano, aspiro a abrir una guardería que abrirá puestos de trabajo en mi comunidad. Sin embargo, para lograrlo necesitamos políticas amigables para inmigrantes que promuevan la integración de nuestras comunidades y que permitan a nuestras familias acceder a las herramientas que necesitamos para tener éxito. Mi deseo para 2018 es que los inmigrantes tengamos los mismos derechos y protecciones que todos los demás. Las familias trabajadoras inmigrantes estamos aquí para luchar por nuestras familias y nuestras comunidades. Estimados concejales, nosotros, las madres inmigrantes, debemos asegurarnos de que si dejamos a nuestros hijos en sus escuelas, podremos recogerlos por las tardes. Nuestras familias merecen la seguridad de que no serán detenidos ni separados. Solo pensar todos los días que corren el riesgo, perdón, que corro el riesgo de no volver a mis hijos me causa un gran dolor en el corazón. Nuestros niños merecen saber que podremos cuidarlos y protegerlos todos los días sin temor a que sus propios padres sean deportados. Debido a esto, estamos a apoyar esta resolución para hacer que Albuquerque sea más seguro para todos.
Good afternoon, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Myrna Lascano. I am a mother of four children, a member of El Centro de Igualdad y Derechos, and a student with Encuentro Nuevo México. My husband and I came to Albuquerque 13 years ago because of economic hardship. In the near future, I aspire to open a daycare which would open up jobs in my community. However, in order to do that, we need immigrant-friendly policies that promote the integration of our communities and that allow our families to access the tools we need to succeed. My wish for 2018 is that we immigrants have the same rights and protections as everyone else. We immigrants, immigrant working families are here to fight for our families and our communities. Dear city councilors, we immigrant mothers need to be sure that if we drop off our children at their schools, we will be able to pick them up in the afternoons. Our families deserve the assurance that they will not be detained or separated. Just thinking that every day I run the risk of not seeing my children again causes me great pain in my heart. Our children deserve to know that we will be able to take care of them and protect them every day without fearing that their own parents will be deported. Because of this, we urge to support this resolution to make Albuquerque safer for everyone.
Thank you. What was your name? I know you're the daughter, but...
Mariel Leon.
Nice to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Council Borrego.
Gracias, señora. Tu hija está muy inteligente y bien linda. Gracias.
Good job, Council Borrego. Okay, Linda Tilly, followed by Mike Shuttle, followed by Carmen Manrique, followed by Mike Shuttle?
My name is Mike Shuttle. I've been a resident of Albuquerque for over 30 years, after I used to work with you, Dr. Winter, at Highland. And I'm a retired Marine Corps captain. I don't want to confuse immigrant-friendly with illegal immigrant-friendly to criminals. There are people that have come here illegally. That's fine. They have good intentions. There's also people that have come here illegally that have committed additional crimes. I don't think there's anybody, whatever neighborhood it is, that would not want to see these people go. I don't quite understand this, why we're helping them to stay. I am very much in favor of working with law enforcement in such a way to take the bad actors out of the neighborhoods where they can be identified. If one of the methods is that they're here illegally and they can be deported, let's deport them. Let's get them out of here. We've got a big crime problem in this town, one of the worst in the whole nation, and yet we're encouraging law enforcement to not work with getting rid of some of these criminals that are here. Let's get rid of these criminals. Thank you.
Next speaker? Carmen Manrique, if I pronounced that correctly?
I will ask for permission to translate for her.
Fine, go ahead.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, señor President Sanchez and members of the council. Mi nombre es Carmen Manrique. Soy propietaria de un negocio local y miembro de un activo de la comunidad empresarial. Me involucré en el centro porque mi esposo y yo queríamos aprender más sobre cómo podemos luchar para mejores protecciones para nuestros trabajadores, inmigrantes, y nuestras comunidades. Además de ser dueños de un negocio local, mi esposo y yo somos pastores de una iglesia local. A través de nuestro negocio y nuestra iglesia reconocemos las innumerables contribuciones de nuestras comunidades inmigrantes que hacen a la ciudad de Albuquerque. Venimos de una familia inmigrante trabajadora y hemos experimentado de primera mano los riesgos que los inmigrantes enfrentan a diario. Debido a esto, mi esposo y yo estamos comprometidos a garantizar que nuestros empleados y los miembros de nuestra iglesia tengan acceso a los mismos derechos y protecciones que todos los demás. Además, asistimos a los talleres de "Conoce tus derechos" para garantizar que proporcionaremos las herramientas más actualizadas a nuestros empleados cuando se trata de proteger a sus familias. E invito a otros empresarios que se unan a mí, se involucren con la red de negocios de inmigrantes del centro para luchar por los derechos de nuestras familias. Como propietaria de una empresa local, soy consciente de los beneficios que las empresas locales de propiedad de inmigrantes brindan a la ciudad. Además de crear empleos, contribuimos a los ingresos del estado pagando nuestros impuestos, donamos nuestro tiempo y dinero a organizaciones locales como el centro, y somos activos en nuestras comunidades, iglesias, y escuelas. Les pido esta noche a los miembros del consejo municipal que nos representen y nos respalden al apoyar la resolución 18-7 para hacer que Albuquerque sea una ciudad más segura, no solo para nuestras comunidades de inmigrantes y refugiados, sino para todo Albuquerque. Gracias.
Good afternoon, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Carmen Manriquez and I'm a local business owner and I am active member of Business Community. I became involved with El Centros because my husband and I want to learn more about how we can fight for better protections for immigrants, workers, and our communities. Besides owning a local business, my husband and I are both pastors at a local church. Through our business and our church, we recognize the countless contribution of immigrant community that make Albuquerque great. We come from a hard-working immigrant family and we have experienced firsthand the risks immigrants face daily. Because of this, my husband and I are committed to ensure that our employees and the members of our church have access to the same rights and protection as everyone else. We have attended Know Your Rights workshops to ensure that we provide the most updated tools to our employees when it comes down to protecting their families. And I invite fellow business owners to join me and get involved with the Centros network of locally-owned immigrant business to fight for the rights of our families. As a local business owner...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Riley Escalada, followed by Shakir Farid, followed by Damian Lara.
Good evening, councilors and president. My name is Riley Escalada. I am a community organizer and human rights activist, here to bring about the attention of barriers existing in our immigrant communities and communities of color. There is a huge mistrust between our communities and law enforcement with the rhetoric coming from Washington threatening to stop aid to communities that don't fully cooperate to help deport immigrants. This only furthers our doubt in our government, realizing that this kind of authority does not understand or recognize our humanity. APD currently enforces immigration law, currently works with ICE, and continues to permit this cruel and destructive agenda. The resolution needs to restrict the sending of information to ICE for the protection and the welfare of the people. Personally, I don't believe in law enforcement, only because I am well-informed of this police corruption that exists within these subcultures and these police departments. So, police officers within these departments share the same norms and through that, new behavioral developmental development can be attributed through psychological and sociological paradigms. We know that within the police culture, officers learn to be suspicious of the public. We know that police culture is racist and thrives off assumptions about criminal behavior of communities of color. We know that police culture allows the continuation of human rights and legal violations that results to serious consequences on our people, destroying their humanity and our families. We have the people power to hold our councilors and our city mayor accountable. We, the people, are asking that you work with us for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Shakir Farid Abdullah, welcome back.
Most definitely, and I continue to be coming back. My name is Shakir Farid Abdullah. I am a community organizer with Black Lives Matter, with the Muslim community, and also with...
One second. You can't stand next to him on the podium?
It's all right, man.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all right. It's okay. It's okay, because I'm going to speak again on public comment, so, most definitely.
It's fine.
But I would just like to say that as you hear our community come forward, and we know that you are listening right now, I would like to express my gratitude that you are taking the time to hear us and that you guys are taking the time to consider us and that you guys are taking the time behind interchambers to debate these issues. And we challenge you to continue talking, but we beg of you to be with us and to walk with us and to visit us and to understand this plight of humanity that's devastating our community. You have the power to be about this revolutionary change, that our people are being persecuted and dying on these streets. So, we appreciate you, Ms. Penya, because we see you there, and Mr. Davis, we see you there, and Ms. Borrego and Mr. Winter, I've seen you guys on these streets. Mr. Sanchez, I've seen you. So, we beg of you, please come out more, hear us more. We can do more. And we just applaud you for being here and taking the time to hear us. Thank you very much. Peace.
Thank you. Damian Lara, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I appreciate it. My name is Damian Lara, and I am an immigrant. I am an immigration attorney. I have been a staff attorney for the New Mexico Legislature and a legislative assistant for the Congressional Hispanic Caucus in the United States House of Representatives. And I am grateful for this resolution. I am grateful for the immigrant-friendly policies and that we will not expend local taxpayer funds to enforce civil immigration laws. I am glad that you are taking steps to ensure that we have full access and equal access to all city services. And I also ask you to ensure that we take proactive steps and dedicate resources to ensure that our law enforcement and our city resources provide protection for all residents, regardless of immigration status. And that means that we train our officers in all ways and ensure that we have true community policing that builds trust among the immigrant communities, all communities, and law enforcement that only serves to ensure the protection of our law enforcement officers. It means that APD should have finally timed U visa certifications when an undocumented immigrant is a victim or a witness of a crime that only furthers to ensure that trust and build that form. And so, I want to make sure that our officers, when they are encountering victims of domestic violence, victims of assaults, victims of crimes, and they are undocumented, that we channel them to a U visa certification. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Last speaker is Letitia Carrion. That will conclude the public comments on this agenda item. We are now back to the council. I think there is a couple of amendments. Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are just some clarifying amendments. They don't structurally change the bill, but I would move floor amendment number one to the bill. Councilors, it's available in your iPads and available to you if you need it by paper. Briefly, Mr. President, amendment number one, on page six, line 21, inserts the following after city. It inserts, quote, "Or any third party acting on its behalf." Number two, on page seven, line eight, strikes "to enforce or assist," and replace that language with "nor permit any city facility to be used for the enforcement or to assist." Essentially, these two changes just further clarify that the resolution also applies to entities that are working on behalf of the city and/or operating within city-owned property. So, I would move that amendment.
We have a motion, any second, by Councilor Gibson for floor amendment number one to committee substitute R-7. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries. And we have one more?
Thank you, Mr. President. My second and last amendment is another technical cleanup amendment. For brevity's sake, I'll just quickly read it. On page seven, line six, append with the following: "The city shall not disclose information that the city currently possesses regarding place of birth, religion, or national origin, nor information collected under the exceptions stated above in paragraph one, absent a valid judicial warrant or some such information or otherwise required by law." Mr. President, to clarify, the resolution currently limits the information that the city would collect. This amendment adds language to limit the sharing of information consistent with law for the information the city may already have. We don't believe that this is an issue, but it's just further clarified for folks that if the city has information, we'll continue to comply with IPR and other rules and regulations regarding that data.
Do you want to move that?
I move... I'm sorry, Mr. President. I move floor amendment number two.
We have a motion, any second, for floor amendment number two to committee substitute R-7. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries. We are now back on the bill. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President? We have one last speaker.
Okay, we'll go back to the one last speaker. If you would, come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Don't be shy.
Good evening, Mr. President Sanchez and members of the council. I am Letitia Carrion. I am an immigrant. I was 15 years old when I came undocumented from Mexico. My heart was ripped apart. I didn't want to be separated from my family, from whatever was familiar to me, my land, my brothers and sisters. It was very painful. I'm just going to give my personal... I'm just going to share about myself. My family could be that of anyone else here. I come from a family of 16 children, and there is four entrepreneurs in my family, one artist, and three who have their own business already. And we came to Levington, New Mexico, where there were, at some point, in the restaurants, there were signs that said "No dogs or Mexicans allowed." I am so happy that we are beyond those times. The United States has been a great country for us, and I'm just very happy to contribute greatly to this great country. Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. We are back on the bill with the councils. Council members, are there any questions or comments from this council? Councilor Benton?
So, I just wanted to ask the sponsor, I... sponsors, I heard some members of the public talking about APD and that this would be a, basically, going to free pass from crime or taxation and so forth, specifically with regard to the idea that criminals would not be prosecuted. I wonder if they could respond to that.
Sure, and I'm going to...
Council Davis?
I'm sorry. Mr. President, I'm going to lead on our city attorney a little bit to help me clarify this response, but this legislation doesn't do anything different. It's, as we've heard from attorneys that testified and as our city attorney testified at our very last hearing on this item, this has no effect on federal law. We're simply clarifying here in the city of Albuquerque that our laws treat every resident who comes for a city service, or whether they call for help or receive a contact with police, or whether they sign up their child for after-school care, that we treat them equally without regard of their country of origin or their paperwork. For police officers, they know that if they stop a person and charge them with a crime, that that person will go through the very same criminal justice process that you and I would encounter without regard for their status, and that our police officers will not be complicit in supporting an enhanced deportation or federal immigration that the federal government is not already doing on its own. And so, our Albuquerque Police Department can continue to do its enforcement actions. We believe it does not jeopardize federal funding that's related to any other federal law enforcement activities and cooperation that we do regarding violent crime, gun crimes or others that we do, and we've crafted this in such a way to ensure that the mayor and us as elected officials can continue to support those cooperation agreements. And I defer to the city attorney if we have specific legal questions in that regard.
I would just... The idea that we would not prosecute, let's say, anything other than supposed immigration violations, but other crime that is being dealt with locally that APD rightly was pointed out, is tasked with dealing with, this doesn't in any way limit APD's ability to prosecute those types of crimes, whether it's grand larceny or whatever it may be.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Benton, no. This bill in no way would impact APD's task and duties to prosecute or to prevent all people from committing crime within the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, yeah, you know, I think the language was that we need to help APD do a better job, and I would just posit that, given our current circumstances, to be piling on immigration enforcement that's not associated with crime would not be helping our police do a better job and, to the contrary, would be burdening them with a federal responsibility. Also, I think there was discussion about that, you know, people are getting a free ride and that they're not paying their taxes and that, you know, our taxes are due now. I would just point out that this government, this local government, is primarily funded by people's grocery receipts taxes and basic business taxes and such. And the immigrant community pays those taxes. They certainly pay towards the operation of the city government in a substantial way. So, that is an issue, and I do think, I do believe in our local prerogative to see how we deal with our local resources. So, it's all tied together, and so, I think some of these arguments are not fully fleshed out that we heard.
Councilor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank the sponsors for sponsoring this. It does give more detail and makes what we said last year stronger, and I am all in favor of that. Excuse me. There are a number of issues. I took a few notes when I was listening to public comment, and I won't go through all of them because I... We all, I'm sure, can speak about this for a very long time. I don't want to do that. But two things that I heard repeatedly was that there somehow there are being special rights being conveyed, and I think that's part of the conversation that just happened. But, again, there's not only, there are no special rights being afforded with this resolution. I also heard somebody said that it gave more protections, legal protections, like as in a path forward to stay here or to change one's status, and it doesn't do that either. It just simply gives the city a hands-off approach. Mr. City Attorney, can you... Did I get close?
I don't have a plaque, but...
Mr. Aguilar, sorry.
President Sanchez, Councilor Gibson, no. This does not provide... You're absolutely correct. This does not provide any rights or benefits at all. Thank you.
Thank you. So, last thing I want to say is, I mean, humanity, the humanness part of this, that's where a lot of the compassion comes from, passion on both sides. where a lot of the compassion comes from, passion on both sides. But I cannot be a part of breaking up families, and if there's anything I can do to stop that, I am going to do that. But the economy, that's another thing I want to touch on. If you make an income in the United States, even outside of the United States, and you're here, you pay taxes on that. Maybe not with a social security number, but you get an ITIN, and you pay income taxes on that. I did enough of those returns. I know this is true. Last thing, talking about the economy, has anybody noticed that our birth rate is dropping? If we do not bring in immigrants, who is going to be doing the work in 20 years, in 30 years, into the future? We don't have that many kids being born now that will, you know, sustain our economy. So, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Counselor Borrego, followed by Counsel Winter. Please hold your applause.
Mr. Chair, councilors, thank you for... and thank you to the public for everyone's comments. I really, truly believe that we need comprehensive immigration reform, and especially in light of recent activity with dreamers. I mean, if we don't dream, then what? You know, what kind of society do we have? I mean, dreamers, that is what our society is built on, is dreaming and visualizing and coming together as a community and a diverse community. I mean, I support that. I had a couple of questions for the sponsors of the bill, and I wanted to know... because I've had a lot of emails, both pro and con, you know, supportive and non-supportive. And some of the information that I've sort of derived from those emails is... and the first question I guess I have is, there's an existing bill already in the books, and this actually just strengthens that bill. Is that correct? Am I correct in understanding that?
Counselor Davis?
Or Counselor Peña, but yes, Counselor Borrego, that's correct. Although I will point out, as we well know, this council last year passed an updated revision of the immigrant-friendly status that had been, as Counselor Peña had mentioned, and it was championed by, and our Presidente Emeritus, Counselor Gardunio is here as well, by several previous councilors. We thought it made clear that the city shall not spend money to support federal immigration actions. However, we found that the other, the old administration, the previous administration, still offered office space and a desk in our prisoner transport center to federal agents, not deeming that an in-kind sort of support. This legislation would close that loophole and make it absolutely clear for this mayor or any future that supporting any immigration capacity in any private part of a city building that's not open to the public and giving them ICE agents any special access would be against city law.
Okay, and so that brings me to my next question, which is, there is no local taxpayer... there are no local taxpayer funds being used for this bill. Am I correct in that, in understanding that?
Counselor Peña.
I mean, I would have to defer to the city attorney, but I wouldn't see where taxpayer dollars are being used for this resolution.
To implement it. And I mean, that... it seems like... like, am I correct in understanding that?
Colonel Aguilar, go and proceed.
President Sanchez, Counsel Borrego, I think that question would be more appropriately answered by the administration regarding implementation, but as far as the legislation itself, as it's written...
As it's written.
As it's written, there's no... there's nothing in here requiring the expenditure of any funds, and I think the opposite is true in the intent of, or in the language of the bill as written.
Okay. Sarita, would you care to weigh in on that?
Snare, go and proceed.
Counselor President Sanchez, Counselor Borrego, I agree. There's no call to expend funds under this bill.
Thank you. The last question I have for the sponsors is regarding public safety, and it's... what I heard is that, you know, domestic violence, and I mean, there are people that are afraid to actually report, and we all get the little real-time crime, you know, on our phones and on our computers that tell us exactly where the crime is occurring. Seems to be occurring a lot in sort of what we call the international district. There's a lot of issues downtown. I mean, it's all over the city, but I see, and I read those religiously almost every single day, and I look to the areas, and it seems like a lot of those areas are where immigrants sort of are condensed or live. And, you know, I know they live all over the city, but it just seems like especially in the international district. So, I guess my question is, do you... am I understanding that? This would help public safety, actually?
Yeah, Mr....
Counselor Peña.
Mr. President, thank you. Thank you for your question. Actually, this bill's going to go a long way in terms of helping public safety in the city of Albuquerque. This is going to give people the confidence to be able to report crimes where they otherwise haven't. You know, I can't speak to the international district or any other districts, but, you know, crime, as someone stated earlier, that, you know, the illegal immigrants and criminal activity, it's... that's not where just all the criminal activity is coming from. We have a serious epidemic in our city in terms of substance abuse, and that's affecting families from all races and nationalities. So, and with that, you know, some of the criminal aspect is coming out of that. So, I think that this is really going to help in terms of people's ability to be able to report these types of crimes.
So, I guess generally speaking, there is a fear for immigrants to report crime, and that's been documented by police.
Counselor Davis?
It's fine, Mr. President. We'll tag team here. Yes, Counselor Borrego, you're absolutely right. I can speak in my own experience as a former police officer that when you show up on the scene of a shooting or domestic violence incident, the last thing you want is for a family, whether they're mixed status or undocumented status, for a victim to not want to cooperate or not want to cooperate in a child abuse investigation because they fear that going to the police station to ask for help might trigger an ICE agent to follow them home. The other challenge, and we heard from a young man earlier tonight who told us about his experience with a police officer, where they had a proper protocol, where the violation was for a petty traffic offense that all of us have committed at some time or another, and the officer's professionalism and their guidance that reflected the values of this city and our department and our better community policing simply said, "I don't care. I want to deal with the problem that we have here today and get you on your way and make your life better." That's good. The other side I want to point out that we also heard that I think addresses your other concern. There are two sides of the criminal justice sort of system. There is the defense and how we prosecute and investigate it, and that's... and then there's how we prosecute and follow up and get to a place of justice. And the other challenge that we're seeing now coming from the courthouse is those very minor cases, those early domestic violence cases, traffic offenses, where persons of mixed status or simply who don't have, who may have a driver's permit but not a full driver's license, you know, and all kinds of people make those options. They have the option like you and I to go to Metro Court, appear in a judge, and use their civil rights, their constitutional rights to appear. But in some cases, our defense attorneys are telling us that ICE agents are targeting persons in the courthouse who is under APD guard and providing court security, targeting some of those persons who fail to have social security numbers or countries of origin on police reports that are not available to the general public. We absolutely want to ensure that if you have a traffic ticket, you go pay it, and that if you're a witness or a victim in a crime, you're comfortable coming to a facility where an APD officer is protecting you and your right to go to court, and you don't have to worry about a federal agent getting confidential police records because you cross a line covered by APD. And this would ensure that we do that.
Thank you, Counselor Davis, and with all due respect to individuals who live in the international district, I don't mean to, you know, stereotype or anything like that. I was just... I have worked in the international district myself, and I, you know, I have worked a lot with immigrants, so I'm very maybe oversensitive to some of those areas.
Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This goes along the same line that you all are talking about, and this is to Mr. Aguilar. A gentleman made a comment about helping illegal immigrants who are criminals to stay. So, Mr. Aguilar, I want to follow up on this. So, if we have an illegal immigrant that is arrested, say for a property crime violation, a DWI, domestic violence, an assault charge, or worse, and let's say, you know, a lot of our crime is happening by repeat offenders. So, let's say we have someone that's a repeat offender who's charged, gets out on proba... not probation, but gets out on his own reconnaissance and goes back. So, is there... this bill prohibits at any point for us to communicate with the federal government on somebody that we have that is a repeat offender? Does this bill... does it... does it always... it says that nothing can happen because, even if he's a repeat offender, let's say a property crime.
President Sanchez, Counsel Winter, the bill, the legislation doesn't speak to the situation that you're describing. The legislation would still allow APD to arrest any person committed of any crime regardless of whether the number of offenses...
Yeah, Mr. President, but Counselor, maybe you can answer this. But there's no point, because of this bill, let's say he's got six or seven property crime violations, and he's back on the street, there's no point that anybody could call the federal government?
Counselor Davis?
Mr. President, Counsel Winter, it's not currently APD's practice to do that because APD is not a jail. We don't provide housing. We provide temporary arrest and deliver them to a detention center where the court oversees that process, and so our police officers and our police department are not engaged in that process. I would, however, point out that if a federal immigration agent were to find a person who is a repeat offender committing a serious crime, and they feel obligated to not wait on the state process, but to go to a judge and get a judicial warrant to execute immigration services, and they prove up to a federal judge that they have probable cause to believe that person has violated federal law, and one of those standards by which they could immediately take custody, they are still welcome to do that, and our police officers would enforce that federal warrant. We simply do not have a process in place, and this would not create one by which there's an automatic reporting or an administrative hold that is not overseen by a federal judge.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. This is a reaffirmation of some of the questions that have been asked before. Does this bill in any way violate federal law?
President Sanchez, this bill does not violate federal law.
And will this bill cost the city any grant money if this bill is passed tonight?
President Sanchez, this bill at this point will not cost the city any grant money.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, at the beginning of this meeting, we stood together and we together recited the Pledge of Allegiance. And at the end of that recital, we said, "With liberty and justice for all." I was in Washington, D.C. back in 2007 with hope and optimism. At the time, Senator Edward Kennedy and Senator John McCain were sponsoring a comprehensive immigration reform bill. Unfortunately, here we are 11 years later, and no comprehensive immigration reform has been done in Congress. So, it's up to local municipalities and local governments to work with the immigrant community. And this is just a reaffirmation that Albuquerque is an immigrant-friendly city. And it makes me proud to stand up here and to see immigrants come to a city council meeting and not be fearful of being deported or being taken away. You have that right because Albuquerque is an immigrant-friendly city. My mom... I apologize, no applause. My mom was at the Denny's Restaurant a few years ago when she was alive, and MS-13 gang members walked into that restaurant and killed a young prep cook by the name of Stephanie Anderson. I don't support immigrants or anyone committing crimes in our community. I want our community to be a safe community where we can live in harmony, and I think that Counselor Borrego was saying that dreamers have every right to dream, and we, as elected officials, should try to find a path to citizenship in this country. I've got a relative who's graduating from pharmacy school this year, and she married an immigrant. He's working on his papers, and they felt very foolish and embarrassed because they made them look really bad, and they made it really difficult for them to try to get their papers. They finally had to hire an immigrant attorney to get the work done. We should welcome those individuals that want to become American citizens and not make it so darn difficult for them. It's really challenging when they're afraid to basically go out in public, they're afraid to, you know, leave their kids at school because they may not see those kids again. And I support keeping families together. You know, many, many people from across this country that are immigrants, not just from our bordering country, Mexico, you know, want to become, you know, American citizens, but the challenge they face in trying to get their citizenship is very costly, it's very expensive, and I would hope that we, as a nation in this country, can work with our immigrant community in assuring that there is liberty and there is justice for Okay, let's go to Counsel Benton, then Counsel Borrego, and then we will go to closing.
There's just a couple of other notes that I made during the public comments, and I do appreciate everyone's taking their evening to discuss such an important issue. I think one of the first speakers, or a couple of things I wrote down. One is the definition of sanctuary as a sacred place. The other one was that that's not what we're doing here. The other one, there was a comment about that we should not be associated with the third-world country. And I'd just like to point out, I'm a migrant to New Mexico, okay? I wasn't born here. I've lived here for four decades, but I wasn't born here. And we have a history in this place that's not like every other part of the USA, all right? If you're up by the Canadian border, it's not much of an issue, you know? It's mostly people who look and talk and seem to be like the people who are already there. But our borderlands, I guess, for lack of a better word, on the southern border of the U.S., you know, we've historically been very pervious. It's been a pervious border. It didn't even exist, right? When the U.S. took New Mexico from Mexico, which it had been part of that independent country for 50 years, or thereabouts, 40 years, you know, the border was somewhere else. So, you know, we've got a... the USA, you know, you think about it, all the Latin American countries, almost all of them modeled their revolutions and their independence on our principles of independence and self-determination. So, it's ironic that after that occurred that we do go take a big chunk of Mexico or we do go and dominate the economies and the cultural... the economies specifically, but the self-determination of Latin American countries, all up and down the hemisphere. So, it makes a strange discussion at this point after that history to hear some of these statements about third-world countries. I think also the border, it's an economy, right? It's a big part of our economy. If you look back on, whether you like NAFTA or not, right? But when you look back on NAFTA back in the '90s, there was very little opposition to NAFTA in New Mexico, as I recall. It was pretty much recognized that it's an important part of New Mexico's economy to have cross-border communications and really important to business. Anyway, in the current climate, you know, there are communities up and down the Rio Grande which are opposing the border wall, including business people who are opposing it. And, you know, this kind of mentality that divides us and hurts our local economies is unnecessary. We can enforce our local laws, but we don't have to buy into whatever the latest flavor is from the federal government. So, in that spirit of those other communities who are opposing the border wall, we don't have a wall proposed here, but I do know that I think Albuquerque will remain a sacred place. It's a sacred place to me, and part of that is the long history and culture, and that we will remain friendly to immigrants from all stripes.
Thank you, Counsel Benton. Counsel Borrego.
Well, you know, I was raised in New Mexico all my... Well, I, you know, I was raised in New Mexico all my life, I was born, educated, retired. I worked all over the city, all over the county in my career as a city planner, as a county planner. I worked with immigrants, I worked in Barrelos, I worked in the international market, I worked in the East Mountain area, I mean, I live on the west side, I worked on the west side. I look around the city and I look at projects that I worked on, and, and I'm not talking about me, I'm telling you this because I think about the flavor of the city, of the people that I worked with. And the people that I worked with were welcoming people, they wanted, they wanted better for their communities. And, you know, I think back to my father, who was in World War II, and fought, he was in Germany, and what he was fighting against, and I think that we, you know, as a city of Albuquerque, is why we love Albuquerque, because we are a city of diversity. And, and I look around the room and I see people of all ethnic backgrounds, and, you know, and in some way, we're all brothers and sisters, and I, you know, I, I don't see that division, and I think it's time for us to stop seeing that division and start working together, because we don't need more walls, we need more bridges. If you think about walls that have been built back in Europe, they've been knocked down, I mean, they've come down. And, you know, you know, if, if they're criminals, then let's get the criminals in jail where they belong, or let's send them where they need to go. But people who are trying to support family values and trying to, you know, be educated in schools, I mean, let them go through the process of becoming citizens, I think that pathway is a very important process, and we need to support that as a community, and, and I say that because I, I, you know, I saw young children testify today, and those children deserve a future, all of our children deserve a future. So, I, you know, I, I thank the sponsors for this bill, because, you know, I, I think that, you know, we are definitely, you are definitely visionaries, and, and I very much appreciate that, that you came together on this.
Thank you, Counsel Brago. Let's, any more questions or comments? Then we will go to the sponsors to close, Counsel Davis, and then Counsel Penney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, first of all, I want to say thank you, and I'm grateful to Counsel Penney's leadership on this. She was working on this and was a champion of those early resolutions before I joined the city council, and so thank you for letting me join and work with this, with you on this, it's meant an awful lot. And for big issues like this, where we take a lot of public input and where the details really matter, I'm particularly grateful for some of the folks in our staff, and we don't do this often, but I do want to do this because it took some time. Mr. Melendez, Mr. Farran, Ms. Cazada and their city council, Mr. Zar and Mr. Aguilar got thrown into this right away in the city legal department, and we're grateful for the community organizations that brought so many of you, like El Centro, the Interfaith Coalition, the Jewish Muslim Coalition, and so many others who are already sanctuary in the work that you do. But we can't ignore our place in this conversation, because some people who say this isn't a local issue miss the fact that people in Washington have made this our issue. And I want to, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Aguilar, I want to ask, if I can, just very quickly, I want to present to you a couple of scenarios, I think the legislation can get wonky, it's very long, it uses, we pick the words that matter on purpose, but at the end of the day, how we apply it matters, and if I could help, if you could help me just really quickly with a couple of scenarios, I want to be clear. If an organization or business seeks to lease a city facility for the purpose of enforcing or supporting deportation actions, will this legislation allow the city to enter in that contract?
President Sanchez, Counsel, Counselor Davis, no. I mean, my, my reading would say, would be that the legislation prohibits city facilities from being used for immigration purposes.
Thank you, sir. If a federal immigration agent seeks to access a holding facility or a non-public area of a city police facility, will this legislation permit that?
President Sanchez, Counsel Davis, yes, with, with the warrant.
Thank you. Mister, and we've covered the others I wanted to mention, and as I mentioned, this is a bigger issue, and if I can be permitted to read, I want to read a couple of notices and a couple of numbers from a story by Sarah Macarang in the Santa Fe New Mexican last October. And if I may, Mr. President, very briefly, so this story comes from October 2017 in the New Mexican. ICE commenced talks with CoreCivic, formerly known as the For-Profit Corrections Corporation of America, to adopt the Sebelah County Detention Center soon after the Bureau of Federal Bureau of Prison ended its contract in 2016. Under a new contract initiated last year, CoreCivic, that for-profit company, private prison company, will be paid $150 million for detaining immigrants at the Sebelah County Detention Center over the course of a five-year arrangement. ICE pays $55 per day per detainee. And, and the article goes on to say that in Albuquerque, the city council just passed, this was talking about our February resolution, passed a resolution in February to affirm the city's immigrant-friendly status. Still, data shows that deportations take place from Albuquerque, often in the middle of the night. CoreCivic is paid $97,000 per month for regular transports, including runs between Sebelah County and our airport tarmac. ICE transport log data, covered in just two months, offers a snapshot of how these new immigrants are identified. Of 342 deportees that were flown out of New Mexico in just two months, in every instance, ICE data indicates that in spite of the president's assertion that we were, quote, "getting the gang members out," not a single person had any gang involvement, based on ICE's data. Eighty-eight percent of those immigrants, 302 of them, had absolutely no American criminal history. And of the remaining, 18 records listed their highest offense as petty misdemeanors or traffic violations. And of the 284 detainees who were deported just to one country, included a 26-year-old woman who was pregnant and had never been to that country before in her life, deported from New Mexico. So as we sit in this room, none of us here write the rules about how our federal immigration policies work, but in our city of 600,000 New Mexicans, there are nine of us, 10 of us, with them when the mayor, I hope, signs this legislation, that have the power to decide how our city resources will be used. We cannot ignore our role in the process. When the police come knocking at your house, you have two options, you open the door and tell them to get a warrant. This bill is intended to tell ICE to go get a warrant if you're knocking on APD's door. So, Mr. President, I encourage our counselors to support this legislation.
Counsel Penney to close.
Thank you, Counselor Davis, I really appreciate that, and I also want to thank the staff, you know, we really, it took a lot of effort to really get this down to where we weren't violating any federal laws, you know, all the effort that was put into it, I, I just really appreciate it. I know the staff members and, and Chris Melendez, I just, it's a lot of hard work, you want to make the right decision for our community, and you want to make sure that we're not doing anything that violates the rule of law, if you will, right? So, I just, I, without going into much detail, a lot of the, the questions and comments were made in, in relation to this. I, I just want to just add a few more things, and please be patient with me. You know, as a native New Mexico, with, a New Mexican, with all due respect to the natives that have been here long before us, you know, my family's been here for generations and hundreds of years, and, you know, there's, I, I just want to tell a story of, of my, my grandma, you know, my grandma was born, I was raised with my grandparents, they were born in 1896 and 1895, and I was, I was raised with them, you know, and hearing the stories of some of the, the issues that they had to address as, as they were living here in, in New Mexico, you know, my grandma talks about the border, how the border, the border, she didn't cross the border, the border crossed, the border crossed her, them, and, you know, we've heard these stories time and time again. But one story that sticks out for me a lot is that, you know, my grandma was telling me, when she was raising her children, that when she would send them to public school, you know, they were, she used to have to make them tortillas, you know, and all the, the other kids had bread. And, you know, she was so ashamed of the fact that, that she had to do, not because, because of tortillas, because, you know, everybody loves tortillas, right, now, but, but she really felt bad because she wanted the best for her children, she wanted to provide them with everything that everyone else had, you know, but she had to send them to school with tortillas, and then the kids, my mom and others talk about how they were teased in school for having those tortillas, you know? And when we talk, you know, there's a gentleman who spoke, and he obviously was a native New Mexican as well, Hispanic New Mexican, and, you know, it's one of those things that as we move forward, you know, this is really a, a human rights issue. And the reason I tell that story is because there, there used to be, we were those people that were looked at as we didn't belong, right? We didn't belong here. We were there, we used to have the Project Webback operation, I don't know, and that's what, that was us, that wasn't the, the Mexicans that have come here recently, that, that was targeted towards the, the New Mexicans. So, you know, I, I just want to say that as, as we move forward, as Counsel Davis said and, and others said, you know, this is really, and Cynthia, you put it so eloquently, is that we need to move forward, we're very unique as, as a city and as a state in our culture and our rich history that we have, is that we need to, we need to work together. Do we have to have, do we need to have immigration reform? Absolutely. But as that happens, we don't have control over that as here on city council, but what we do have control of is we have control of what we can do in our city and how we can nurture families and, and, and people, because to tell you the truth, you know, sometimes there's not a delineation between native New Mexican, Hispanic New Mexicans like me, and Mexicans that have come here, you know? Not too long ago, about a year ago, somebody asked me, "Well, what part of Mexico are you from?" And I pointed to the ground, you know, because I think this is where, but, but anyway, with that said, I, I just want to again say that, you know, it feels like tonight that we're voting on this status, for the first time, we're not. This, we were, we were, we voted on becoming an immigrant-friendly city in the year 2000, and, and last year, as Counsel Davis stated, is that we reaffirmed it because some of, some of this stuff has been brought to light. And tonight, all we're doing is really looking at what we have in place and making sure that we have clarity and we're able to define what we want to do and what our intent as a city is. And so those are the only changes that I see happening this evening, and, you know, and, and so again, you know, to me, this is a human rights issue, this is the very thing that Martin Luther King, Cesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta, Rosa Parks, and other civil rights leaders throughout history have fought and died for, just basic human rights. So thank you, I urge your support.
We've already closed, Counsel Brago, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor to move committee substitute R-7. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed? That carries on a six to three vote. And again, I would like to thank everyone that came to speak on this bill tonight, and We will be taking a dinner break, and we will return in 30 minutes.